I'm not weird though.
Yeah.
I am.
And Shannon, you've been here with you.
This is a celebrity.
You are.
To be honest with you.
You look so.
You should come to the elementary.
Yeah, 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 I know what you're talking about.
That's me.
Why are you grown up so fast?
Yeah, I'm a junior.
I'm a junior.
Oh, I'm hard to see as special if I ask.
Next year, I'm a senior.
How many of you guys do that?
I was looking for like people that were present. That I use for some of my good.
Good to see you guys.
You guys answer.
Otherwise it would have just been.
We had three pills. So I went to the care property yesterday and then last night I sat on the heating pad this morning. I stood up and it was like and I was like, it felt better, but it still stirs.
I stretch and stretch and stretch time back. You know, you're just always waiting for that one. One. Well, then you're. You can't breathe for a second.
You just you feel your pullback to dust and like river and then you're like a nightmare. Now, when can you do that?
After.
We used to do that.
So Joe's got AD and Tracy's here for an item. Sandwich. Want to get out here.
Did you find?
Sorry. No, we're. On the switch. Know what it's like. All right, we'll switch it. We just have to change it. So she'll switch it. Anybody? No, but we'll make sure it's switched on there. So I don't know. Does Laura know this?
Yeah, she does. She knows too. We swapped when I was the treasurer. Now I'm in budget. She went to affiliate.
Right, yeah. So we're switching your name right now. For the future, because I didn't get on the switch.
Before I was going to take.
It doesn't work. All right. Call meeting to order. Praise for the to the legions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, roll call. All four members here additionally. We've got Mr. O'Keefe. There's Trace. Allison, Marion. And. Okay, no one. Very good. And I know we've got Vessers. Do we have anyone later to speak? All right. Very good. Um, got the agenda. Um, any changes to the agenda?
The only one is set of questions for E and this is going to touch. It's kindergarten roundup to me. So that is F will be questions for me during my report.
Oh.
I did not. Something's adding kindergarten roundup.
Kindergarten roundup. Okay, very good. All right, you have a motion to adopt the agenda.
To vote.
Motion by Nancy. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Nicole. Any questions or discussion? Are you none? All those with favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, sign, motion carries. Public comments and rebel recognition. I guess we don't have any public comments, but we do have some rebel recognition.
Yeah, well, we do. So congratulations. And I think, and I don't want to steal Joe's thunder because he's playing AD tonight. But I congratulate Ryan Knutson, who won his way to national speech tournament. And so I want to recognize them. I know they have speech tonight, too.
They do. Subsections.
So kudos to him though for that. It's something else. Oh, uh, and I'm sorry. I don't want to butcher this. We have the dental bus.
Mobile dental.
Thank you. Mobile dental unit over in Dilworth that's been coming to the elementary. And we got an email this afternoon just saying how many kids are able to serve. It's just fantastic. How many kids have used that service? I want to say there was 21 exams or something like that and 15 second exams. So they feel like it's really getting some momentum. So I just wanted to say thanks for allowing us to come out there. That was easy for us, so.
And I think they did their dental presentations for the young kids.
Okay.
Last week or the week before and gave them the goody bits and stuff, so.
My kids have been counting sugar all week, pointing out how much I'm eating, which is wonderful.
That's very nice.
Yeah, very kind of them.
Rebel recognition.
Serena knows.
Yeah, rebel recognition.
Right, right choices is what they told me.
Ooh, look at that.
Yeah, I know.
Another positive, I know, and I did get the numbers. I did talk to Brittany yet. Brittany was getting a hairstylist or someone to cut hair today. And they're going to be at the elementary school. So Brittany just kind of found out last minute that there's someone was going to be able to come.
The day then for the roundup or for just the day for kids?
No, no, just for if anyone who hasn't had a haircut and needed one. Um, that that was going to be provided at the elementary school today. So I don't know how many kids actually got a haircut because obviously we'd want to get parent permission first. But um, there were some kids on the dock. There were some kids on the dock and who their parents agreed and were going to come in and so the kids could get their haircut. And I believe that rebel hope chests, they were going to be paid for the hairstylist that was coming in today. So I'll have to find out from Brittany how many people because I just like that.
They got their teeth cleaned at the same time. They got their.
That'd be a challenge.
Any other rebel recognition?
Here we were excited to start spring sports and here we go. I don't know. It was pretty fun to watch those kids running track today and holding and throwing. That's why I came in a little hot because I went and watched that a little bit. We had some really fast kids. Standing. Concordia today? Concordia. The boys, four by four, were three quarters of a.
Track.
Track ahead of the next team. So it was, I was like, oof, never in my life have I been that fast.
Shout out to the elementary music teachers. The elementary had their music program.
Oh, yes.
And it was fantastic. So. It's a lot of corralling for a lot of little kids. So props to them.
And reporters.
And instruments.
Did it sound good?
Have jazz bands start at. Say districts, regions, sectionals, one of those. Kudos to that group. They did a great job. And robotics club met their goal in fundraising. So congratulations to them. They did a great job fundraising and thanks all people that did fundraising and gave money to.
When is that trip?
April something. I think you have it.
Sixteen.
Maybe it's.
Some really.
That's a Tuesday. And I think that's when departure is and then they start on Wednesday the seventeenth.
Can you do it a send off?
I think it's led by Amy Johnson.
I know they went to the Lions club and my dad is a Lions member at Dilworth and they thoroughly enjoyed seeing their robotics display. And that was really wonderful. And I know the Lions supported them. So just meant a lot that the kids came. He just said it was really nice to give money and sometimes you never get to see the team or see the, you know, the club. So, yeah, he enjoyed it very much, so.
And that was part of their, it's part of their scoring too. I think just their ability to fundraise. So that's, that's probably a good start for them. So it's exciting. Any other rebel recognition? All right, let's go on to six point one. Activities director report. And while we'd like to have Katie to be at.
So, but as you're used to with the old AD report, I have a thorough back. Some coloring and some.
Thank you, Joe.
Yep. Let's touch on it. A little bit of the thunder was stolen with Ryland Knutson. They qualified. So congrats to him. And then robotics obviously met their goal early for the worlds down in Houston, Texas. I'm not 100% sure on what time they departed to get that. Uh, we'll just go through this updates, athletic programs. You know, what that means is Katie is working on all the stats for all of our programs to get those kind of organized in one spot. It's been, you know, a project of the past and it's been hit and miss with, you know, some different coaches and trying to piece it all together. So it doesn't, that doesn't happen overnight. You don't have a, just one database that has it all. So it'll take some time to get that, but she's working on that. As well as a Hall of Fame, putting together potential Hall of Fame. She's gathered some documents in the process from different schools. And she will try to get that kind of up and running for the fall of 2024. Number five on here is Huddle. How many are familiar with Huddle? Basically, yeah, what Huddle is, is it's a program where you can upload anything. So we use it for football. We use it for basketball. And you can give them your game film and then we'll actually dissect that. And it'll tell you how many shots within the paint, how many yards a running back had, your scoring drives, and you can break it down. So when we send it out to kids and say, hey, look at the film of Thief River Falls. Boom, it's, it's instant. It's actually a pretty neat program. Well, Huddle is evolving. And if you were able to tune into Wadina had it, Frazee had it for streaming, like for our basketball. Both Wadina and Frazee use Huddle to do their streaming. Um, what you can do with Huddle is if you ever watched one of Barnesville's stream, they can actually do the play by play with it. Their AD actually does it. Katie refuses, but we would have some people in also would be willing to do it. Not Micah, but. The potential is, is actually pretty cool. So the shift is we will start streaming through Huddle here at DGF. One of the main reasons is Huddle and YouTube is what our, our normal stream is starting July 1st. That's going to be cut off. So we've kind of got to adapt with it. Uh, the only thing is, um, they're going to raise their prices. They always do. So we're looking at an additional three grand, but that can be made up as if we're doing our own Huddle broadcast. We can do our own advertising and now that money that's been going to magnitude sports, things like that, we're just going to recruit that. So that'll be a wash and it should be, we could actually potentially make money on it. The only other thing is going to be on at the football field, we do not have internet out there. So they say that you can't use a mobile hotspot. We can do a direct line of sight. We can put an antenna up on top of our school and we can actually beam it over there. It's a real thing. Um, and then we can pick it up that way. Um, I think we can do, I think there's ways to get around it. And I'll talk smart because the IT is not here shaking his head, but I think there's ways around it. There's got to be a contraction where it's a mobile hotspot that's in, we plug the camera into this and we can be. But that's for them to figure out. So that's something that they'll be looking at.
But that allows us to, um, stream like freshman games, JV games?
Yeah. So we're able to do that. It would be nice because now on our phone, we can just flick it on. We don't have to have, okay, we've got a bunch of advertisers coming for a freshman game. It just didn't, you know, it's, it's harder to do. Where now, as long as we've got the camera, it would melt right above, uh, right above the windows and then you can just flick it on. And whether you've got, uh, announcing forward or not, at least you've got the game and, and it'll be kind of like we have here. It'll follow the ball. It'll follow the, the crowd. Here, we're kind of fortunate that we've already got the camera in the rebel gym too. So now we can flick on and we can do our ninth grade games as well. So that was kind of a big change and it was kind of nice.
Did you have to pay for this app to like watch the games?
No, so both Wadina and Frazee, it's not one of those, if you've ever been frustrated, like, hey, you gotta subscribe to this and now it's going to cost you a buck or say your live event, but yet you can never click on it. Frazee and Wadina had it set up right on their website. So you go and it's live streaming. You click on it and there it is. And it's the, you've got the other ones that are listed and then you just click on and watch.
Frazee was really nice. So you, you log onto their school website. There's a live stream. You click it and then it puts all the activities. And then you go to the activity that you are searching for. So like when the girls' basketball team play, we pulled it up on our television. We have girls' basketball and voila. There we were able to watch our team play. I thought it was easy to find and I liked that they, um, I liked that they had all of them separated. So if you were, say, into the arts or something, then they were maybe doing something in the theater, you know, you could click on that. It just, it was very user friendly, I felt like.
Yep. And it had its own ring where someone said, oh, you're streaming the game. I go to DGF public schools on YouTube and then from there you'll see all of our stuff where here it's, they have a direct link right on the website. Go to the website.
It just says, I literally just said live streaming.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we pay for this on the athletic.
Right now.
Well, then they can do some advertising, kind of what Joe said.
So volleyball, basketball, boys and girls, and then football currently use it. And I think we used to, I'm assuming we just take that cost and we split it four ways through all the budgets and stuff like that. Now this would be a way to actually generate probably some revenue too. You looked at some of them, they're always doing kind of shout outs to, you know, the typical businesses and always give to DGF. So. So, yeah, that'll be, it'll be, that'll be a, that's, that'll be a good thing. That'll be a nice upgrade for DGF. Girls wrestling, if anyone tuned into the wrestling, they have their own division of wrestling, which is actually pretty neat. That will be an option here at DGF. There won't be any additional cost to DGF because our current coaches can do that. But as you get some females wanting to enter that sport, um, you know, they'll have that option. I don't know how they break it down to who qualifies for state. I don't know the current numbers. Girls wrestling has, Micah, maybe you, if teams have their own full squads, I don't know the weight classes. I don't know about it, but.
Weight classes are a little different. Team aspect can happen, but for the lack of the state having a bunch of old teams at this point in time, I think that's kind of a, that's still just being brought up in girl right now. I think the focus is getting, getting them out there, having them have some success.
More of an individual right now instead of.
Yeah, I think it's more focused on individual than team by far.
Does that affect, I think it's called Title IX, where you have to have a balance of.
No, funny, there is no such thing as, um, boys' sports. There's girl's sports and there's sports. And I'm not trying to be funny. Any, so any female can be in a male sport. Who else can be in a male sports? So.
It's not like you're saying. Additional for.
We're actually okay on the.
But we.
We are with dance lane too. We already are in complaints, but this, this gives us a buffer of complaints.
Yeah, we're already going to pass one in compliance. If you broke it down, then what are we offering?
You know, and so I haven't had much conversation with you guys or Katie with this either, but I'm assuming that, uh, that no additional causes because then the girls can just go to Frazee, go to West Central, to wherever we're wrestling, the girls will come along. If that town has girls, they would just do it that way, I'm assuming.
Right now, we actually have some of our guys wrestle the gals. So we have some schools to bring. We get.
Yeah, break some girls.
Stuff. And then it would just be nice where, you know, have we really advertised to our females here? Like, no, it's, we'll, we'll match you up as best we can against the other females from the other town.
Specific just female individual tournaments. And then there are some that'll be mixed. And if you've ever come to a meet before or a JV tournament, you will see those kids intermixed. And at that point in time, it's all just about getting them, met time and opportunities to grow. So.
That part's not terribly new because I'm not terribly young and we had girl wrestlers at my school. So that has been around for a while, but they only wrestled boys. I mean, I don't remember them ever getting matched up.
And it started to become more and more common. Every teams that come in, we always see a few females that are, which I think is awesome. So.
Are there females that have voice interest at DGF?
That, that I don't know. That's why I think we're, I don't know if we. Has it been done justice where we advertise it to, you know, I think it's always just been commonplace where wrestling has, you know, the guys are doing that where now we're seeing it more and more. So have we really, hey?
Promoted?
Yeah, promoted a little bit better. Let's see. And maybe you get one or two and then we figure out, okay, they're pretty good and how they fall back to the state. And with that, I don't, I don't know.
It would be a state on the boys too, just separate divisions. Yeah. So.
I know one of the years I've been wrestled, when you was at high school, we had two girls. And they were maybe on JV, no, but they were on the JV team. And kind of like what Micah said is they, they would go with it and they would just be paired up with someone from the other team and a male who was pretty much try to get as close of weight as they can to parallel.
Uh, speed and strength programming, we run that through Sanford Power, um, held here. Registrations are coming in. And the in season, off season open lift during the year has been successful. So we've got a lot of kids that are using the weight room that aren't in basketball or wrestling or, or something like that during the off seasons. We're still getting them training.
That starts at what grade?
Uh, we allow, speed and strength is down to eighth, eighth grade.
Eighth?
Yeah.
And I think the, the off season one, if I'm understanding right, if you played a, a high school sport, then you're able to join in on that. I've only played ninth grade volleyball as an eighth grader, but some of her friends who only played eighth grade didn't, weren't included in that same.
IB.
At least that was the practice.
Okay.
Deal Joe's number, but I think Sanford is also sharing more information on the, I think it's sixth and seventh grade. There's an opportunity to, um, work correctly with Sanford. So we'll be sharing that out too.
Uh, next year, so one of the big ones, if you looked at the banners, they've got double headers for conference basketball. So we had Staples Motley and.
Rappids.
Our Rappids joined our conference now. So they're going to be looking at doing double headers. However, of the teams in the conference, you know, talking with Katie, they're going to have it where there's some of that or a very small school, they're a bigger school. So they would maybe play one and it would be worth the double. It would count as two games, but they're just going to play the one. Uh, you know, one of the concerns is that you always want to keep your non-conference. So for example, we had a good thing. We like playing Kinder. You know, they're always pretty, you know, well, it's not a bad, you know, cross state rival or, or things like that, or you've got your, um, schools that you just want to keep those intact. So you don't want to lose that. So I think they're looking at doing your 16 conference games. Well, if there's nine total teams, um, you know, eight times your two games is your 16, but they're looking at kind of tweaking that a little bit. But it'll be, it'll free up some nights, you know, and I think they'll have to look at alternating the guys and the gals as far as the start time. Fair that, uh, the girls don't always have to start at the six, six thirty and the guys are at the eight. We'll flip that now, but, um, that's gaining traction within the conference. And then for baseball and softball, they're limited. They don't get the 26 games of basketball. They only get 20. So they'll have to do some tweaking. Some of those, but we'll get that figured out. Uh, individual record boards is on Katie's radar. I'll put it on the long wall. And then hosting the section track meet on 31st of May. So they'll be looking for a lot of off tiers. And then number 11 just went down and I just asked, you know, what are the numbers looking like? So went through and highlighted the spring sports and. Share spring sports and actually all kind of expertise. There's whether it's the speech and the videos, all the way down to the category ones is actually pretty strong here at DGF. It always has been. So. Highlands for the arts, for the, the activities. It's, it's usually pretty solid. I think this is officially the longest I've ever done.
Well, it's nice that you put the hand out together.
Yeah, it took me a while, but we got out there.
About time you get you, you just get there.
Yeah. Anything for me?
I have a question.
Okay.
Who was the, who was in charge of the youth sports?
Yingby. Yingby.
Is that something that is all like winter or is that?
So that is, yeah.
Will it just start?
It, it actually, it's, that's one that's got a fall and it's got a spring tied to it. And there's a couple of different vendors. It's been a while, but I think it's got a couple of different vendors and then. But it just started probably a month ago.
It was right after robotics.
Yeah.
Well, you had him come with you and that was, like, he stepped up really last minute. So that was awesome.
Yeah.
How many kids are involved with it?
It might be on that.
Yeah. Yeah. And right now, we currently hold it down in Seoul. IT trivia for you. We have to punch holes in the firewall for every. Let's say we're playing Super Smash Brothers. I think is one of the approved games that they do. So there's, I think we've got eight different ports and we've got to hold it out of the room down by the fax room because that's the only one that's set up. And then our IT guys, so they make it. I don't know. It's kind of, it was interesting, but kind of complicated, but we got it figured out. So I think there's usually maybe pushing a dozen. That's starting to pick up a little bit. But it's not, you know, they don't have the, the Call of Duties and the graphic kind of games like that, but it's still, they're competing with teams all the way south as Texas to, you know, it's different regions kind of set up. So.
Any other questions for Joe? Thank you so much, Joe. All right, uh, we'll get on to six point two, community education.
Um, overall, uh, for summer rec, we just rolled out on March 1st. Um, March 1st was a busy day. We rolled out a bunch of things that day. We rolled out, uh, other faculty, we rolled out some other activity, we rolled out Rebel Kids Care. So, um, it was an important day for us. Uh, the brochure and everything's online. Registration closes May 1st. Um, then the activities will begin. We'll have a week after school gets out to kind of get, um, everything solidified. You'll always take those last minute registrations. So, um, activities, most of them will start during the third. We have not started hiring any coaches yet or anything like that. Just waiting to see where our numbers will fall. So more of that before coming. Um, we focused a lot, um, in the last couple of months on early childhood. Uh, one of the things that Shannon and, and a lot of our early childhood and Rob's here staff, Michelle and, and others and Heidi, um, spent a lot of time evaluating our early childhood program. Uh, we had a, um, review of what our early childhood program has looked, looked like last year, um, and this year, and then tried to see what do we want to do. Because right now, um, we have Rebel Kids Care. The students are in half the day in Rebel Kids Care and spending half the day in early childhood. And would it be, um, more efficient? Would it be best for kids to have less transition, um, things like that? So we did some brainstorming with our admin team, um, with all of our early childhood staff, Rebel Kids Care staff. Um, Shannon and myself, we did surveys with the public. Um, and then we brought that data and looked at that data and brought that to our advisory council back in February. Um, and I know Shannon has kind of kept you updated on that. Um, but overall, we ended up rolling out for this fall, our all day early childhood program. Um, what does that look like right now? What does our early childhood program look like for 23, 24? What does our early childhood program look like for twenty-three, twenty-four? Right now, we have one TOTS teacher, she teaches, Ms. Ranky teaches in the morning and the afternoon, two different half-day sessions, and shares the heads of pair throughout both programs. School readiness, right now, we have Mrs. Fox who does just mornings. And then we have Mrs. Rams who does mornings and afternoons, two sessions there as well. And they have a pair, both of them do. And then we have our Rebel Kids Care two lead teachers who help out down in Rebel Kids Care, and then we have some pairs who help out in the afternoon. So we tried to just say, how can we have those less transitions? So what we did with all that information, we brought it to the advisory council, and it was unanimous that we do all-day programming for the fall of twenty-four. We shared that information with you previously, I gave you another copy of what we have online. But overall, what it is, is what we've had is our fee structure for a family. If they want to be Rebel Kids Care in the morning, after school, and all, and early childhood, they were paying one eighty a week. So you go to work, they get off, they can be here all day, and you pick them up, there's one eighty. This year, with a full day of early childhood programming, we're working with Wayne and Brittany on specials to see how we can get library, how can we get Fayette, how can we get music? I was actually just visiting with Brittany a little bit today, and it looks like they're plugging in our specials. So it's neat to see that our students will get some of those opportunities. So we're looking at that. But overall, the cost only went up ten dollars a week. And they'll get breakfast and lunch and all of that, so it's just, it's exciting. But what that brought was, we put out the requests, saying, are you interested? We had to look at, once we started getting those, it was amazing when you talked to families on the phone or via email, and they would say, when does this open, when does this open? And once we started seeing those requests come in, I would probably say in the first three, four hours, we probably had thirty registrations that came in. When you look at that, when you look under our current requests, right now, we're sitting at ninety-one. We haven't even been able to even confirm all of them yet. Right now, school readiness, you'll see sixty-five requests for school readiness. Of those, fifty have truly been confirmed, and they have been invoiced for their first week of care. So they truly have committed. So when you think of fifty, I know when we talk to Michelle and Heidi and all others, we're gonna be meeting again, we meet, you know, regularly as a team, just to kind of brainstorm where we at, who we need to get the team together and see where we are. But when you, right now, have fifty, you know, we say, okay, that twenty number per class, but if you were to talk to us as a team, we'd probably say about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. We really have to build room, because I'll tell you, every time I'm turning around, we're adding more spent kids into our program. So right now, we technically almost have three school readiness sections. We only have two teachers. So we also want to look at internally, what do we have for staffing? So I truly thought April first would be that date where we'd truly be able to say, where are we at, where are we gonna put you? But I'm honestly gonna say it's gonna be another two weeks after that, because I truly want to sit down with Mary Ann and say, what do we have right now existing for Paris? Before we go and advertise that we have openings, what do we have internally with our staff? Right now, with our two lead childcare teachers, one of them is a licensed teacher and one is not. So if we had another section, what is the, what is best for the district? Do we move them somewhere else, do we put them in one of those roles? We need to, as a team, have a conversation on where we want to place our staff for the coming twenty-four, twenty-five year. So could that potentially lead to four sections? Like I say, we're only into March, and we are going all the way until August to see where we are. We do have about, for school readiness, we probably have about eight families that said, I would love a part-time, part-time spot. Well, right now, we're trying to fill the full-time, but I was talking to Brittany a little bit ago, just as we were talking about early childhood, is, we don't ever want to say no. You know, we don't have room, or we don't want to take part-time. We did say that we'll make that decision probably in mid to late July. But if we are full, and, I mean, we only have so many rooms. I know, sitting down with Wayne and Brittany, and I know Shannon, we truly know that we have right now four classrooms down in the early childhood wing, for the girls' motor room, a TOTS room, and two school readiness rooms. We've already earmarked that we'll utilize those four rooms, we might move the girls' motor room somewhere else. We're gonna try to probably, if we grow to four sections of school readiness, we may use during the day the existing Rebel Kids Care room that we used before and after school and use that. We also might use the existing childcare room, but I just want to preface that this is still gonna be coming a year or two from now, we're gonna continue to have more and more and more kids. So just know that we have to work closely with Wayne and Brittany and Shannon and others on what we have.
When you said you're trying to keep it to fifteen, because I can't imagine twenty-three year olds in the same room all day, that's a lot of little kids.
And I think that, you know, the other piece is, when I was in TOTS yesterday, I mean, you have, like I noted, right now, with the kids that we have in our program, I know Kristin and Michelle and Heidi, every time you turn around, they're doing emails, they're doing additional screenings, things like that. With this number, I know that we, on our spreadsheet, we truly have the sped team saying, who do you foresee that you've heard that could be another inquiry into our program? I mean, I think they have five, six mornings on the list for the coming year. That is not really included in our numbers.
And I think it's important to look at numbers and needs, not just numbers.
Yeah.
Because you can have fifteen kids, but if you have lots of needs, that makes a big difference.
And I think one thing I would say is, I know Heidi reached out to me, I'm gonna put her on the spot here, is truly for us in the office, we can look at the numbers all we want, but we have to look at them and say, okay, who, where are we gonna put Johnny, where are we gonna put Suzie? Because at the end of the day, when we were in the room a couple weeks ago, the early childhood teachers and Michelle, you're truly taking all of those kids and saying, okay, this one would work good here, this one would work, you know, so that you're really spreading it out and putting them where they would be the most successful. We just can't keep taking, taking, taking all of the kids, but we just have to truly work closely as a team to see where we want to put everybody. TOTS right now, that obviously is a little bit younger age, so right now, we have twenty-six. I'd probably say, we probably have one section confirmed. Not all of them, we've updated our spreadsheets, but we're pretty close. And that's the one where, that one might take a little bit longer to fill a whole nother section. So we might have to be reflective in late June, July, and say, do we have a part-time section? Do we offer, you know, another type of programming? Because once we bring in another teacher, they're on a teacher contract, and we want to make sure we have enough kids for that class. So we're continually communicating with our, with our families and so forth. But overall, you'll see the staffing, one to two for TOTS, three to four for school readiness. Right now, three for school readiness, and I can see it could be four, it could be five. So just keep that on, keep that on your radar. Early childhood family ed for the coming year, we already have those classes already established for the fall. We have a fall, winter, and spring, and you'll see they're all ten-week sessions, separating, non-separating classes. And then moving into Rebel Kids Care, you know, that's another role that we're seeing tremendously. For twenty-three, twenty-four, I would say we're probably at ninety-six, ninety-seven kids that go to Rebel Kids Care right now. In the summer, right now, we have solidified ninety-eight kids coming for summer. Since Friday, we've had ten more requests come in, and a lot of them are obviously full-time. That's kind of, we're filling them, and then what we're doing is, if we have a family that says, I want Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we try to find a family that says, you know, I'm open to come any day, I'll take Wednesday or Thursday, Friday, so we're able to share some of those spots. But we could be pushing one-thirty to one-fifty this summer, and we weren't there last summer. So I, I think it's, it's a great program, I think people are hearing what the program's about. And we're excited to continue to watch that grow.
If we have part-time families who have already been coming, do, can they still do part-time? Or are you giving preference to full-time first?
Right now, Brittany, we're doing preference to full-time, but it is amazing to see, and I shared this with Shannon a couple weeks ago, of our requests that have come in even two weeks ago, we had thirty-one families, thirty-one students that had not been to DGF before. Right now, we probably have five to ten that are Morehead, they're residents in Morehead, and they want to come to DGF. But our, what we rolled out was, we really want to serve the Dilworth-Lennon-Feldman families first, students that have an IEP, and then anything after that we'll consider probably, you know, mid-June to late July. We really want to give those families of DGF the opportunity, even if it is July one, to get in first before we open it up to others. So right now, we have families that know, I know I'm on the waitlist, but please consider me, and a lot of them are full-time. So for the school year, twenty-four, twenty-five, all of those families again have been, sixty-three of them have already been confirmed, and they just keep coming. And when I say, when I mean confirmed, they've already been billed for one week. It's just we need something so that we don't have a lot of drops and go, oh, gosh, now what are we gonna do? But the Rebel Kids Care staff, I will say, are phenomenal. Carolyn Johnson has been there since day one. We have a couple teachers who'll help us out this summer, and we have a majority of our staff coming back from last summer that were at college, they'll be back this year. We'll probably have probably twenty to twenty-five staff members helping out this summer as well. We're doing, we'll have our calendar out for the last week of May, all of June, July, and August. We're doing themes every week. We have Travel Tuesday, where we go on a field trip somewhere, check up a river, or we go all over. We're doing like a Bubblealooza up at the Ball Diamond, like they did at the Loco Days, where the kids will play in the bubbles, and so, and we're incorporating that in with our three, four, and fives as well, so it's, it's really, really fun. Youth development, that is the one report I gave you, I gave that to our advisory council back in February. Not, some of the programs are still ongoing, one for, I have one invoice that I'm waiting on for our basketball, but other than that, the one thing I, I'll just let you look at this, this is the youth development, where I just say, we're busy, busy, busy. Overall, this is just showing what we are happening. And then when you get down to probably the third page, the one thing I'd just like to keep you apprised of is, there is times that families may not pay their bill for community ed. So what we've been doing, like other departments, is we're putting those in synergy, and they're getting those for mic recalls on Fridays. So when you look at the date, on January sixteenth, we had five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars outstanding in community ed that had not been paid, and as of yesterday, Sarah runs this every week, we were down to less than half of that. So and some of the families, I know we won't get, and at some point, we'll probably have to just, I guess, write it off, but it was some type of financial hardship that limited them from paying, so. But.
I talked to Shannon about this just briefly, and I forgot to mention it too, but I, I wonder if we had a system where you registered and paid on the same site, you know, click, click, if that would help people pay. I mean, some forget, some just can't, some don't, whatever, but if we had a system that, probably had both, did both at the same time, and it might help you have to track less. I think that would be nice, and more user-friendly.
Yeah, and I know definitely is worthy of entertaining that conversation again.
Yeah, we can just check about it.
Because we have looked at Helio, it's another system, a lot of platform that a lot of schools use. The cost was up there, but I will tell you, Sarah and myself, we spend a lot of time just going through, and like, I'll, say it's basketball, okay, Sarah, did everybody pay and register, or register and pay?
Yeah.
You know, because when you're ordering shirts, you don't want to miss four kids that don't have shirts. So it, there's.
There's back and forth.
There's a lot of back and forth, and it would probably save us a little time. And the part that I am hesitant on, it might take us a little time, but I know that then that fee will have to get passed on somewhere, and it'll probably be to our families, so. But, you know, it's one of those things we build, it's no different than what the fee that we build in for right wheel, for Rebel Kids Care, you know? That is wonderful.
I do have a quick question. When you're talking about three to five, you know, school-aged kids, classrooms, that's a lot of extra kids, and then you're talking about adding programming, what does that look like? Is that in the girls' motor room, or is that in the gym, in the music room? Or how, how are the music teachers and the Fayette teachers gonna be able to balance those additional kids? Because there are already, I think, splitting classes, like one and a half goes to music at a time.
Yeah, and I think, like Shannon mentioned, you know, we're trying to be creative on if it's our DAP teacher or someone like that that can come over, they have a period, and do it in the Tiger's Den. I think in chatting today, a lot of it was, the Tiger's Den might be the June that we'll be using. When it comes to music, the music teachers, their schedules are full. So we're looking at probably hiring and how, you know, it might be once a week, but we at least want to provide something, and it might be an outsourced vendor individual. We know of a couple people that would be willing to do it.
I think it's great, I just was like, how do you add that to their schedules? Because it already seems like a lot.
It can't go on their schedule, it just can't, and that's what we talked about. Is, is there a current DAP teacher, is there some, you know, time there that he could do that?
I assume you had to pad up some magic.
Yeah, no, no, but you know, it's just you want to be able to, if they're all day.
Oh, for sure.
Give them some additional programming that they're receiving, so.
I completely agree, I think that would be good for the teachers to wind everybody down.
I know, I know. If you have questions, let me know, too.
You have a question for Tracy?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, on to six point three board committee reports, we'll start with the DLT report. DLT report.
At DLT, last week, we talked about our reach-back system and so.
Very riveting.
There wasn't a whole lot of conversation or questions, because I don't think anyone understands it, including myself very much, but Shannon did give us a nice overview and talked about, I think it was interesting seeing a bird's eye view from our roof, because it looks, you know, a little bit different, but there's like twenty-five roofs on one building. So talking about the maintenance of all of them, and they're all built at different times, so each costs different monies, and it's just like a nice perspective of, well, why can't you just fix the roof? Well, because it's five million dollars, that's why, or because it's this small chunk and not the rest of it. So I just thought it was interesting, but who knew so much about ATR?
That was, yeah.
It's something you don't think of all the time, when, I mean, when you think about maintenance, of course, you have to maintain a roof, but we have like a hundred little roofs to maintain, really.
You showed the projected budget through twenty-thirty. No, right, I just seem so far in the line.
Because by the time we maintain our last roof, our first one has to be done again. So it's kind of like a never-ending cycle, and same with the heating and cooling, it's not perfect, it's not great, and how do we fix it? And what needs repairs, what's new, what's old, because the building is been added and remodeled, and added and remodeled, so we know there's problems, but we're working on solutions.
If you remember, I think in the weekly update I shared too, I did testify in the Senate a couple weeks back. Senator Kupchak has wrote a bill regarding LTFM and roofs, and that's where, that's why I was there, because he invited me to speak on his behalf or with him. And that is just so we can levy it as a board level if we need to. Like we talked about the roofs, they don't give them away, and just like grocery store, it costs more to go there, it costs more to do the roof, and so. Yeah, it's, it's an option that we may have, it's gonna be a hundred percent levy, there's no aid unfortunately at the state level, but if we feel like we need to levy a million dollars, okay? If you, just to give you a perspective, last summer's work on the roof was one point seven million dollars. So.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap, and yet, you know, honestly, in Dilworth now, we just have one section in the school, it's like right over the second grade, that hallway is the hallway, or is the roof that's the only one left over there. It is in the red department, which means in the next few years, it should be replaced based on thirty years of life. Over here, it's a little bit different, it's got a lot of sprinkle of red, and well, there's some green, we did a lot of green too, but it's, it's what it is, so, yeah.
That's very much true.
Any questions for DLT? All right, on the personnel report. We met the parents, we've been meeting with the, not just parents, but the non-certified group. Well, we've started, started working on the language part. And we're seeing, I think we're getting really close to getting that done. Probably the next time we meet, which I think is April tenth. Hopefully start getting into dollars and, yeah, so I think it's been going pretty well. You know, our focus, of course, you know, across the board has been with trying to bolster health insurance. Reduce the need for, trying to do what we can to increase the number of people utilizing the health insurance so that we can get better rates, get better bids. So hope to continue doing that. Questions, sir? All right, work session.
I don't know any other ones. We put it on there just in case you wanted to summarize it. Or just based on what I heard tonight, it probably should be another one.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, you know, we just sort of started talking about the co-op. Learning a little bit more about that, some of the, I'd say more of the aspects of level of care and some of those things that go into that, what it would be structured like. Trying to think what else we talked about. Barry spoke and kind of gave us a real nice update on where things are with the special ed program. A lot of the good successes, successes that, some of the different numbers. We had just good, I think, good discussion and some good, trying to get some good understanding of what, where we currently are. And just kind of start scratching the surface on what the co-op will do. So more to come on that, I'm sure. Anybody have anything to add?
I think it's important to know, just because not everybody will watch both or listen to both, or maybe won't listen to any of it, I guess. But that we are looking to reduce staff, that we're not looking to eliminate. Position people who are with us, who are made with us, largely.
Or, or, yeah, or with.
Or with the co-op, but like still.
They'll have a job offering, yeah.
Anything else anybody wants to add? Okay, let's go on to six point four superintendent report.
All right, graduation. This is that time of year we got to find out who wants to be on stage. Wants to be the speaker. No, wants to shake hands and hand up with some of you who have kids. So I thought maybe you might be interested. That's what we've done in the past. No, that's for sure.
I would consider doing it if nobody else wants to have a goddaughter that's graduating. But if there's somebody who has a child.
I have a nephew, I'd do it too. I don't know.
I guess you guys, if you want to just talk, we just need to know, I don't need to know right now. I just, we just need to know, so you're going to put your name on a program, so.
Well, I'm not doing it. I cried last year.
Been there, done that.
I'm out.
I'm out. You can take a little break. Anyway, so I don't have to know now, just, you know what? Don't tell me, I would ask, you tell Brooke. Because the spelling will be more accurate and whatever, so. Anyway, something to think about? Please, I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, I was wondering what the date to go graduation.
Yeah.
That's what I have in my calendar.
Yep. Interesting. It's an evening five o'clock.
It is Friday. Just if anyone's watching this, it's a Friday night. It went very well last year, Friday night.
It did, yeah, thanks. Health insurance plan, health insurance, I gave you a copy of this. I put it by all of you, but we had a lot of paper slides, so it could have been buried. This is just what we got from Sanford. I think I shared this with you also in your weekly update. This does show the two percent. So we went from fourteen, I think we talked with our non-certified, that the initial bit from them was fourteen percent. It came down to two percent, so they came down to twelve. And so that was good. It's still alive, but I was worried it was going to be worse. One of the things to David's point, talking with and negotiating with non-certified, we didn't certify it. And with admin is we're trying to get more participation. And the good news is we have seen some of that in the last year. And so that's why Sanford was, but the good news, we had four bids this year. Last time we had one. So it's nice to have choice, even when the choice isn't always perfect. So Health Partners was one, they couldn't compete, they knew they could, but they gave us a number, which was easy to say no to. Pete gave us another bid. We already know they gave us a fifty percent increase a couple of years ago, so that was easy to say no. Their percentage was not fifty percent now, but it was still pretty high. Sanford, oh, and Medica.
Medica.
And Medica was the other, Medica and Sanford were fairly close. But Sanford came back with the two percent less than they had than that. So right now, that's what we're kind of looking at doing, so.
Does it have a cost with, with the contribution or before?
Say that again.
Before the contribution? I was just curious if this price was before the contribution, that we did work after, so.
Okay, yeah, it's on top there, you can see. Is that what you're asking, and sorry?
You talked about the premium.
The premium.
Yeah, if it was before, like what we
Yes, for sure.
You can see the deductible too, went from three thousand to thirty-two fifty. That was, that's the high D E C O plan, the seven hundred and fifty is still available. The signature and true for the staff to, so whatever you were on before, that's still available. So if you run true or if you're in signature, that's still the same language, which is helpful. Medica had just a bunch of different, you know, we're going to get a little sideways and none of us going to go to Essentia instead of Sanford. And we just got this going, so we know that you can choose Essentia now with this too. That's the signature. Anyway, just wanted to give you the update and spreadsheet on that. Yep, so that's that FY twenty-five budget. I also gave you another handout, which is so weird somewhere. It's, no, actually, I handed it out later to you or when I got here. Yeah, it's got a handy dandy graph on the back, so it's, it's.
This is the letter. Is it this one?
Yeah, it's that one.
Better letter, I don't know.
Yep, so, so this is not official, but this is, so in the strategic plan, your superintendent, KB, I have to give you a welcome back letter in the, to the district in December. I did a newsletter again or a letter explaining why we're wrapped in December, if you remember, and I said Merry Christmas. Now it's March, so this is the next quarter. And this is not done yet, but it's a preliminary, some of the things I've been working on. My goal is to have it up by Friday, which will be good, which is good for me. And this just talks about our current state. Not only us, but social flip on the back, it shows our A D Ms. And this came right from our audit, so you can look at the years and we've talked about this, you guys as board members have seen this. So I'll just highlight something there. Our A D Ms from two thousand eighteen to twenty twenty-three, we've lost ninety-nine students. Ninety-nine students times the ninety-two oh three, which is what DGF gets for each student, is nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars that this district has not collected over that five-year time period. It's not all at once, it's just over that five years, that's the funding that we haven't collected just due to enrollment. It doesn't have anything to do with sparsity, it doesn't have to do anything else. Underneath, you see school funding. So then I compare it, how do we compare with other schools in our per pupil funding? You can see us, and you can see people in our region that are similar size. And you can see people in our region that are bigger or smaller than us. And what they get per pupil, this will get sent out to the entire school district. And underneath that graph, it says the state average for Minnesota public schools with enrollments between one thousand and two thousand students is ninety-eight, ninety-six. Near ninety-two oh three, that's six hundred and ninety-three dollars less than the average schools our size, fifty times that by fifteen hundred and fifty students. You get hundreds of thousands of dollars that I wish we had, but we don't.
Close to a million.
Close to a million. So just that's what it is. There's reasons why these other districts, for example, Pelican Rapids gets ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-six. They have operating referendums. Park Rapids does, Morehead does. Moreheads is small, but they have, and they're at ten thousand. So we're just talking, those are things. So this number, this ninety-two oh three, is state and local dollars. It's not federal money. Federal money, then our number comes to a thousand thousand. And everybody you see on here is up into the thirteens and fourteens thousands, because they get proportionate, just like. So this number, I just want to say state and local, this is what it is. I could throw the other number on there and it would look exactly the same and just be above three thousand dollars more. I'm not done with it, but this will go out. And then the front side kind of explains what we're doing, right? So just want to make sure our public understands. We have a unassigned fund balance, that's not where I want it and where we want it. And it's hard to get there with that.
Scenario.
Scenario. So if you have any wonderful ideas, I'm all ears, I'm working on all of that for you. SRO is the other thing. As you guys know, the Senate, House, and the governor signed off on the SRO bill. Mark Emting, who is Klayconne Sheriff, has reached out to me and would like to re-say that I've had conversations with, well, actually Nicole. We talked about it at our non-certified after negotiations, we talked about our SRO because it happened that day. And then whether we should do it this year or not and re-implement it. We've been very fortunate with the coverage we've had. Our deputies are fantastic already, the county comes here often. Justin Vogel and our city police do a fantastic job. But I think after further discussion, I guess I'd like to propose that we bring them back and finish out the year. And I'd like to sit with Mark and you guys this summer to talk about, is this something we want to do in the future? There's a cost, and that's something we have to evaluate, right? Here's what we get now without no, without a cost, and here's what we get with a cost. And there, there is a difference, so you do get something when you spend money, something to say. But that's something I think you would, I'd like to ask you guys tonight or just tell me, you know, how you feel about it. But I'd like to call Mark and say, you know what? Let's finish out the year with them, let's have them come back, let's get them in our building, let's start doing some of that.
We already have a contract.
Yeah, we already. We, we have a contract, so the contract can be changed if we want it, we also have that freedom. But in any case, I would say do that and then we can evaluate the contract this summer. Thoughts?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
I have lots of thoughts, but we can share them in the summer.
Anyway, so without, you know, unless you guys have some other opposition, I think I'd like to do that, if that's okay with you guys. The E that I added was kindergarten roundup. So our current numbers, when I left today, was forty-six in kindergarten for next year. And with the kindergarten teachers last Friday, I said there'll be more than forty-six, so don't worry. We're going to need more than just two of you to teach. But I said, you know, tonight is important, so we did. If you notice, we spent a little money on, say, postcards, thirteen hundred bucks. Why? Because it made a big difference for Rebel Kids Care and for our early childhood stuff. So we said, you know what? It's worth the investment if we get a tenth of a kid, it pays for it. Anyway, so that was easy. And then we put the sign out on Highway ten, some of you maybe saw that sign. Just trying to say, can you get here sooner so we know what we have, so I can budget accordingly and we can hire accordingly. So where people don't have to be on eggshells about a position and we have to shift somebody else. That's never fun. So it's, but we don't know. So I'm hoping tonight, or tomorrow morning, when I meet with Wayne and Brittany, that they say, hey, hey, we got a hundred kids, so hopefully. So, so it's official kindergarten signing day over there. If you saw, if you saw what they set up, they have a big ball for signing day, so go, that's awesome. So that's it, questions for me?
How many sections of kindergarten are there this year?
Seven. We have a hundred and thirty, yikes, well, we lost two last two weeks, so I think we're on thirty-five. Think we're right around there, right now currently?
You said seven sections, you said?
Right now, yeah.
How many sections of first grade do we have?
We have seven, seven.
Okay.
Yep, seven of first grade, I met with them yesterday, yeah. Second grade today is six, next year, oh, yeah. And then, but see, this is what our problem is, and we're in this yo-yo, right? We talked about this before, one thirty and one ten, one thirty, one oh eight or one oh five. And so then we always have to move a staff member. In my second group, second grade, I met with them today, and there's a second grade teacher that's kind of moved to go to third grade and follow that class. It's just unfortunate because it always seems like we're bouncing people because we have to follow that class. And then they might have to come back, and then they go back.
How many second grade?
Six right now.
So how many, how many students per classroom will it be then if we reduce?
Well, we're going to keep, we're going to keep doing this, so we're going to keep it, so.
But didn't you say there was seven currently of first grade, but now we're going to six in second grade?
Oh, when they shift, they'll be going with them. Is there six in second grade? What? Six in, wait, because it's every other, I'm sorry. So it's seven, six, well, it's not, it's six again because they're older, that's second grade.
So they'll be the same amount of sections of second grade next year as there is first grade this year?
Right now, that, the answer is yes. But, so it's always these numbers, right? So, no, I don't have it in front of me, there's a chart and I have all the numbers. So second grade next year, and I'm sorry, five, six, seven, eight, who do we appreciate? If it's five, I believe the class size, so if I remember my chart right, twenty-one point two kids in a class. If it's six, it'll be seventeen point eight kids in a class, that's second grade. Because that was a discussion, I know that one. I know that one, listen to me, didn't know how many sections I were, so. Anyway, I, we have a chart and I can share it with you, so it shows this zigzag thing. So obviously, in our little, little classes, our, our kindergarten for second, we want to keep those class sizes, you know, in that. Second grade is difficult because seventeen's a small number, twenty-one's doable, depends on the needs. That's always, yep, that's another factor. We have a lot of needs in our K one, two right now, so I, yeah. Need a hundred and thirty kindergartners and then we can talk about adding a teacher. Yeah, it's, it's not fun game, but it's what it is, so. Other questions?
Thank you, Sheena. Let's go on to seven point one. The motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, Mark Clavitt. Do I have a motion? Oh, boy. Okay, Laura made motion and Nicole second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go on to number eight, consent agenda, eight point one, to approve the bills for March two thousand twenty-four. And they mount, oh.
Two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars, sixty-six cents.
Then approve the treasurer's monthly budget report, which is in your packet. And then to approve the resignation of Geraldine Pickard, special education teacher, effective the end of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And approve the resignation of Chanan QC, paraprofessional, effective March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Brittany, a second.
A second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion?
Just thank you to Geraldine for retiring, coming back again, retiring, back and forth, and it's much appreciated.
It's felt kind of final.
Yeah.
She's not here, so we can talk about her, she's not here.
Geraldine said she was going to take my phone up for a moment.
She did have a conversation with me as well, so thank you.
She said she really did us a favor. She is glad coming back, and it's been really nice to have someone who is a teacher, willing to do another odd field mission and work with our students at the middle schools.
Happy retirement, retirement.
Double retirement.
Double retirement.
Final retirement.
She has plans, she totally does. She has other plans aside.
Much deserved.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to number, on to new and unfinished business, nine point one. This is for approved certified contractor, unstandard counselor, MA step three, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Brittany, a second.
Second, oh, Micah.
Second by Micah.
I'm part of Micah.
Any questions or discussion? Do you know what her name is?
You might, I recognize the name, so, so a year, two years, whatever year, I said she couldn't apply. When I told her, you're not going to come here. We didn't get any applicants that year. So then some staff came, some people came to me and said, why didn't you apply? I said, because they just don't want any conflict. It's never easy to have somebody in the district that has your last name and you're the boss. So I said, no. Then this, and they said, so they did. I had nothing to do it, I didn't want anything to do it, I stayed far away. And then they came to me and said, so I said, okay, that's up to you guys, not, not my department.
Should we have that high school, I'm assuming?
Yep. Yep. That's what they told me.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to nine point two, this is to approve certified contract for Alexandra Rowe, A teacher, BA, step three, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions, discussion?
Um, Mrs. Lawer was very excited about, I had talked to her before the music program, she was a Chinese Catholic, all about how wonderful this is gonna be for our school, so I'm very excited for our kids.
Very much so, Kayla was a part of that process too and had time to visit with her and this lady knows a lot about FFA and it's, we're very fortunate, so.
It's been a while since we've had an A teacher.
I don't think I've ever had.
Never, I don't think we ever have.
Kudos.
Did I know of anyone?
Get that done, that is long time, never is long time.
Yeah, never is long, yeah, that's true.
Any other questions, discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nine point three, this is for the approval of certified contract for Yesa Gira, elementary teacher, BA, step two, effective the start of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsey, do I have a second?
Oh, Amy.
Oh, Amy, sorry, Amy.
That's okay.
I got bad ears. Uh, do I have a second? Second by Brittany. Any questions or discussion?
Where is she, she's currently at Dilworth, right?
Yep, she's teaching right now. She was long-term subbing for the year and she now, after that position, that person's not returning, we hired her to make permanent. Yep, we're very fortunate, they said that she did a really nice job.
That's what I thought, okay.
A lot of good nods out there, so that's good, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, nine point four, this is for the approval of a non-certified contract for Leah.
Kwame.
Sorry. Leah Kwame, paraprofessional, class two, step five, effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Um, motion by Laura.
Oh, second.
Second by Lindsey, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. On to nine point five, this is for the approval of a non-certified contract for Diana Perkins, food service, class one, step ten, effective March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions or discussion?
Are we close to full on from service level?
Um, yes.
Yep. Good. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Nine point six, this is a donation resolution. To approve, uh, accepting donations as presented. Do I have a motion? Put that in your bag.
I'll go, I'll go, I'll come back, I'll take it.
Motion by Brittany, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole. And I think this resolution, somebody read it, and.
It's a change in the schedule.
It is required for to accept donations.
Oh, okay.
That's what happens when you go to these seminars, you find the stuff that you're supposed to do.
So this all has a very difficult thing for.
Yes, it's better, level six training from MSBA.
Yes.
Deep.
Okay. Resolution, accepting donations, whereas Minnesota statutes one twenty-three B point zero two subdivision six provides the board may receive for the benefit of the district requests donations or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf of the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district or for the benefit of people's purposes created to provide peoples of the district with advanced education and the advancement of education plan. Whereas Minnesota statutes four sixty-five point zero three provides, quote, any city, county, school district or town may accept a grant or device of real or personal property and maintain such property for the benefit of its citizens in accordance with the terms prescribed by the donor. Nothing herein shall authorize, shall acceptance or use for religious or sectarian purposes. Every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full and, whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members expressing such terms in full. Therefore, be resolved at the school board of Dilworth, Glenland, Felton Public Schools, Independent School District two one six four gratefully accepts the following donations as identified below. Um, from RNG Subaru in the amount of one hundred dollars for robotics, from Amundson Klungbed Drywall, thank you, for golf balls for boys golf, from Dallas and Hannah Leckinberg for a swing trainer for boys golf, from ND FAR Arsenal for a Milwaukee Toolkit for robotics, from Northwestern Bank in the amount of one hundred dollars for robotics, from H Gerard Braun in the amount of fifty dollars for robotics, from Dilworth Lions in the amount of five hundred for robotics.
Good.
And then I don't think.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Brittany?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Me, aye.
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Micah?
Aye.
Resolution passed. On to nine point seven, this is a motion to approve the DGF fiscal year twenty-five achievement and integration plan as presented, that motion.
So moved.
Motion by Nicole, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. And this is, I mean, Shannon, you can maybe just describe.
Well, some people saw my, on my phone where Laura was reading that wonderful resolution, I was not texting anybody, I was trying to find the email I just got today about this A and I, um, and that they did accept it, and this is a formality, so this is something now that you have to put aboard, they have to stamp it. Wayne has done all the work on this and turned it in, we did get a letter back from them today saying they did get it, they accept the budget and everything is lovely in it. This is due to the fact that we have an identified group in our MCA testing that didn't meet the standard, so then we qualify for A and I. This is the second run on this group, so it's still there, but.
We'll be doing it, we've done this years past and this is, we'll be doing it for the next.
Two more years for sure, because it's, uh, this is the first year of the second round, I think. So it's three year, it's a three-year cycle and I think this is the first year of the next cycle, if I remember right, I mean, do you remember, I think it is, yeah, it's, yeah.
This has to do with the.
Well, it's under the world's best workforce, but it's, it's based off the MCA scores and any certain identified group, uh, subgroup, the subgroup population that is scoring a little below what the state is asking us to do, so then they're identified, so then we have to have a plan, which we did, and they did accept it, I got the email today.
Very good. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Ten point one, the next board meeting is Monday, April eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-four at six PM in the DGF community room, and uh, ten point two, the budget committee meeting will meet after that, this is a board meeting here at the DGF community room.
I already told you and Shannon that I will be at the April eighth meeting, depending on time, I'm going out of town, I might be able to join virtually.
Remember, if you join virtually, you gotta be in place that the public can access.
I told my husband this, we're gonna get on an airplane, I said, I can't check in first if I'm going to the meeting, I have to sit in the restaurant, so it's public you guys, that's the rule.
And then I give your.
And we have another thing, like.
We have your address where you're at and locate it, just in case you guys want to fly to the same airport so you can be at the meeting with them. Yes, I think it has your question, it's, you can't make it up.
Depending on time, that's what I might do, but we've got two weeks.
Just remember, you always have the option to watch the video and have, ask us afterwards